It's nice.
All right. Welcome, everyone. It's 1:03 February 28th. This is a work session of Board of County Commissioners. Very eager and grateful for all the interest and participation and ongoing partnerships and conversation today. Well, outside of today as well, but I'm proud of you here. I just go over the agenda for today. We're going to have introductions of our local Department of Human Services Agency and the Colorado Department of Human Services. We can also, once we get down to community partnerships, maybe do introductions and or before speaking, introduce yourselves, please. We will, so the work session today, the board's work sessions are not decision-making forums. We set these up to work through initiatives and planning and projects and don't always have such a robust conversation outside the board. But today we have invited lots of folks to join us in the conversation. So we'll open that up to the room as kind of the last thing on the agenda for community and partnership questions and kind of go into an ongoing dialogue. But first, before that, we'll ask the Colorado Department of Human Services to go through kind of an overview of understanding SNAP, county performance and enrollment measures. And then Janine McGee is our director here locally and we'll have her do an overview of our SNAP outreach program plan. I also would just like to note, this is, you know, one of many organized larger conversations. And we have a Language Access Interpreter Network work session in June coming up. And then a Lake County Department of Human Services Fraud Policy and Practice Work Session that will be scheduled sometime in approximately five or six months, I think. But yeah, the first of a few public conversations that that we've got planned. So I will open it up for introductions. I guess we'll start as the board. I'm Sarah Mudge, one of the Lake County Commissioners.
Jeff Beeler.
Kayla Marcello, Lake County Commissioner.
And then Janine.
Yeah. So I'm Janine McGee, Director of Human Services for Lake County. And I would like to proudly introduce and have my staff tell a little bit about themselves. Not our entire staff, but the staff that work in public assistance.
Do you like to call on folks that are online so we don't have any confusion?
Yeah, let's do online first.
After, okay.
That sounds good. So I'm going to start out with the online folks first. So Sierra, could you get us going?
Absolutely. My name is Sierra O'Neil. I'm the Public Assistant Supervisor. I've been with the department for around 10 years now. I wear a lot of hats at DHS and always have. I am responsible for overseeing my unit, determining eligibility, assisting with policy and procedure, and much more. As a fourth-generation Leadville local, I am dedicated to assisting my community. My favorite part of my job is being able to not only educate my team, but educate the community as a whole on public assistance, policy, and procedure.
Thank you, Sierra. Paige.
Hi, everyone. My name is Paige Trujillo, and I am the Economic Security Manager with the Lake County Department of Human Services. I have had the pleasure of working for this department for 20 years. I currently oversee the Economic Security Unit as well as the Child Support Unit. I am a fifth generation, born and raised Leadville native. And because of my deep roots, my family has established here in Lake County. I am and will continue to be fully invested in supporting my community, my clients, my customers, as well as my department. Thank you.
Thank you, Paige. Gloria.
Hi, everyone. I'm Gloria Perez. I'm joining from beautiful Mexico today. I am the Wraparound Supervisor and IOG Coordinator for Lake County. Within Wraparound, the pieces that involve public assistance that I oversee are, we provide services for homeless youth and families in partnership with the school district. So one of our first goals when we encounter a homeless youth or family is to be able to connect them to immediate, to meet their immediate needs. So that would be SNAP benefits, Medicaid, education services. And as well, one of the goals that we set as performance measures for our program is that every child and youth that comes through our program can get a while child check. So for those that have Medicaid, it would be with a provider of their choice. For those that don't have Medicaid, we tried to connect them with our school-based help center. And then I help oversee our financial assistance, a person that is housed within Wraparound, who is Nancy, and she will introduce herself in a minute. Additionally, we provide, you know, transportation to the food bank. If youth or families need assistance to have their food needs get met to Safeway, if they need to get to Safeway and utilize like a Safeway card that we can issue to meet immediate food needs and also transport them to to any of their appointments to make it easier for them and reduce barriers to getting their food assistance or any of those needs met. So if we need to pick someone up from, you know, where they're at to come to their payment, we can do that within the scope of services that Wraparound provides.
Thank you, Gloria. So then that's a good transition to Nancy.
Yeah. My name is Nancy Calvada, and I'm originally from California. My family and I moved to Leadville when I was nine years old and attended Lake County School. I joined Lake County Wraparound in 2018. And I'm a community caseworker for Lake County DHS and data entry for Lake County Wraparound. For my position as a community caseworker, I assist families during outpatient support for financial assistance. That includes SNAP, Medicaid, long-term care, TANF, LEAF, and redetermination packet applications, and other forms of assistance available in Lake County. I am housed at Lake County Middle School, and it makes it easier for many of our Brown family. I also collaborate with the Lake County School District to go out on the mobile learning bus to meet the applicant in their neighborhood of financial assistance and our Spanish speaking. I get referrals from local hospital, community health navigators, medical and dental clinic, or public assistance staff members, Full Circle, Cloud City, Conservation, before they have their bilingual staff, and send George Food Pantry and Community emails, and Lake County District Family Connectors, and many other sources. Anyone that needs assistance can contact me through email, phone number, email, voice message, or text. Usually, I will call the client back to make an appointment, or sometimes they just need to know their case status for DHS, or help with a letter they got in the mail, for example, their redetermination packet. This year, I have served three families, I mean, 33 families for financial assistance. A total of 10 families have wanted a file but don't have the documentation they need to apply for SNAP or other assistance. I heard from clients telling me that it is a challenge for them to be undocumented or are considered if it will affect their chances of becoming a lawful permanent resident. I will try to connect them with other program alternatives in our community. What I love about my work is helping my clients and my team member support.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Nancy.
Thank you.
Renee, could you introduce yourself?
I'm Renee Holt. I am the Lake County TANF Case Manager, which stands for Temporary Assistance for Needing Families. I have been with the department for over four years now. My family has been in Leadville for at least the last 100 years, helping our community. I work closely supporting our community, including but not limited to case management, conducting interviews for SNAP and cash programs, answering phone calls, voice mails, as well as working with and referring nonprofit organizations and agencies for additional community resources.
Thank you, Renee.
My name is Kimberly. I'm an eligibility technician, and I also work the front desk in the office Mondays and Tuesdays. I accept applications and documents provided by clients, verify information, and make decisions about eligibility based on established guidelines and criteria. I also provide clients with resources available to them within Colorado and the community that can improve their quality of life. I'm originally from Alabama and have been working in this community for two years.
Thank you very much, Cam.
Sonia, sorry, have you introduced yourself before we did in the room? But can you talk more about you?
I could. Sorry for my background, my speaker fit. Hello, good afternoon. My name is Sonia Luna. I have been with DHS going on 10 years now, this coming July. I'm the Child Care Assistance Program Coordinator and the Operations Manager. I am also the point of contact for the Spanish phone line. Clients have the option when calling our main office to select extension one to be prompted to my county cell phone line. Clients also have the option to text my county cell phone and also have the opportunity to have an email to reach me.
Thank you very much, Sonia. So the last person I want to introduce is Maria Carrion Aires. And she is working on, has been working with Lake County Department of Human Services for a while and is working on a really great project. Wanted to ask her to spend just a couple minutes talking about that.
Hi, good afternoon, everybody. My name is Maria Carrion Aires. I'm the principal and founder of Carrion Consulting. I do a couple of things as a consultant. I work with organizations to advance diversity, equity, and inclusion issues through culturally and linguistically appropriate and respectful and responsive practices. Additionally, I've been a professional interpreter for over 20 years now. As a former employee of the Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment, I conceived, created, and implemented the first language access program within a state agency and also helped get the NASPO agreement for statewide access to over-the-phone interpretation going. So I've had the pleasure of working with Lake County DHS in some form for a while now. I think I began with Gloria when we were with CoAct, working with Wraparound. And really, my work in that space focused on helping establish statewide resources for CoAct and their communities across the state, which at that point included communities of practice. And now they've migrated more towards area service organizations and addressing different challenges that communities face across the state, such as lack of mental health training related to interpretation and access to interpreters in rural areas, which is a big challenge. And so I've had the pleasure of working with Lake County on helping them further advance their efforts and supporting their communities at first through the Resilient Lake County Grant, which we started the foundation of language access work and really wanting to make sure that there were policies and training in place that would help staff really have a greater awareness to those needs and be more responsive. We also helped them get a vendor for over-the-phone interpretation set up with Lake County. So that's all in the works. And now we're working on a project to help have an interpreter network. And so, as I mentioned, lack of onsite interpreters is a challenge that Lake County faces, as well as many rural communities across the state. And really, what we're trying to do there is work with communities locally so that they have, they're able to build their capacity with the natural talent that's right within their communities. There's a lot of wonderfully bilingual folks that are in our communities and really working with them to help lift them to better support our diverse communities. So we're trying to reach out to bilingual community members and support them by offering interpreter training and career opportunities. Lake County is doing a phenomenal job in not only paying for this, but also helping this be maybe an entry point for interpretation or other career opportunities bilingual individuals may have in that aspect. So by offering hands-on and best practice training, also helping them steer them towards other credentialing opportunities that are out there, and Lake County will be covering tuitions and any fees associated with these credentialing services. So we are offering some upcoming information sessions. If you guys would want more information, I'm sure Janine would be happy to share those. But there'll be three information sessions in March where we really hope to reach out to bilingual members of the community, let them know of this opportunity, and begin the application process so that we're able to start developing these local interpreter networks.
Thank you very much. And I just want to thank staff for being here today, coming and introducing yourself. You're welcome to stay if you want, but I know this is a lot of stress for you all, so you don't have to stay. You don't want to, totally up to you. And same for the online folks, except for Sierra and maybe Paige, in case we have technical questions. So totally up to you guys. Thank you very much. I also wanted just really quickly, before we go into having the Colorado Department of Human Services talk about their piece of it, want to just thank the staff for all of your work, for your commitment to this community, who I know are your neighbors, are your family members, are your co-parents at school and on sports teams, folks who you see every day in a variety of capacities. As we were putting together the the resources that we're going to be giving out to, starting tomorrow morning, to our SNAP recipients in our community, and we were working on this until late in the evening last night. I just want to share how impressed I am with our staff and the fact that we're literally going through the list, and they know the clients, they know their situations. They know that there's been a change in this household in the last week. They know how many people are in households. They know who's been calling, who stopped in this last week, who called, who stopped in the week before, asking about this program, who's excited about it. Literally no case numbers in clients by memory, in some cases. So I appreciate how hard you work all the time. I appreciate that you come in and you serve our community and do a job that's not easy. It's challenging because there's lots of program rules and policies and a database that we continually advocate for improvement of. And I just want to say also, on behalf of you all as staff members who are Latina and Hispanic and women of color, that I apologize that if it's lack of work that I have done as a leader, and I am looking for what I can do to step up, to be more available, so that the community feels they can provide that feedback. And microaggressions toward you with insinuations of discrimination and prejudging people and threatening deportation, which are all false, do not come towards you. That's unfair. That is unjust. It's inaccurate. I commit to you that I will be on the front lines, taking in that feedback, doing whatever I can do, and the commitment to our community partners that if I have done anything to be unapproachable, to be unavailable, I would love to hear feedback on that as well, because that's my job. And it is not my job to have the integrity and the character of our committed staff members' questions. Folks who are integrated in our community, care about this work, don't do it without a lot of commitment and passion, and have, you know, individually and personally have histories in the community that bring them to this work and keep them doing this work. This unit of public assistance has a combined experience level at the Lake County Department of Human Services of over 65 years. And we're really proud of each other. We hold each other up. We work through tough situations. We work through times that we may get triangulated. And we want nothing more than to do better. And we are open to whatever actionable feedback work that we can do and commit to that. And whatever I can do to bring resources, to bring collaboration, to bring resolution and healing to people who have had and felt that have unresponsiveness, felt they have had a negative, unproductive, or harmful interaction, I commit to working to heal that. And I call upon our white leaders, being one of them, that we step into that work and do a better job of that. It shouldn't have to come to this group of folks being publicly called out and mischaracterized. So that's my commitment. So that's my commitment and I don't come to that in any sense of attack. I don't come to that conversation or that openness out of anything but love. So I'm open to how that's received. I'm open to how that comes across. And I commit to my staff that I will be doing a better job, particularly as a white leader, in making sure that we can do whatever we can to avoid this and heal from it.
Thank you, Janine.
Thank you all very much.
I'd love to just hand it over. Thank you, Janine. Thank you.
To CDHS.
To CDHS. Carla, if you want to introduce your team online, that would be great. Thank you for being here.
Yeah, good afternoon, everyone. I apologize for not being there with you in person. I did try. Had to turn around and come back. I70 was a bit of a mess. We have the great privilege and honor of working closely with Lake County, as most of you know. Colorado is a state-supervised and county-administered model for all human services programs and for our Medicaid programs. Today, we are here only on behalf of the Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program and anything related to food programming in Colorado. So we won't necessarily be speaking on behalf of Medicaid or Temporary Assistance to Need Families or other cash programs. So I am Carla Maricini. I'm the Division Director for the Food and Energy Assistance Programs at CDHS. I'm joined today with my team and I'm just going to very quickly introduce them and then we'll actually go into a presentation that we've prepared for you. SNAP is actually one of the, it's one of the most complex and highly regulated programs of all federal programs that are administered at state and county levels. So I'm really, really pleased that we have Terry Chastain, who's not only our Deputy Director for Food and Energy Programs, but also the SNAP manager for the state of Colorado. We also have Maria Saldana, who's with us today. She is the SNAP Outreach and Education Administrator for the state of Colorado. Jennifer Kret is with us. She is one of our senior data analysts. She is one of the smartest people I've ever met. Really happy to have her with us here today. And Michelle Ortiz, who is our SNAP Outreach Coordinator, and we're just so grateful for the efforts that she has put into this programming and the skill and the talent that she brings to it. So I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Terry and we'll provide an overview of SNAP or Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Programming in Colorado.
Thank you, Carla. I think we are going to go ahead and project on our screen from our understanding. So I'm going to let Maria pull that up.
Actually, I don't have the SureScreen enabled.
Try it now. I think we just changed that.
Yes, it's working now. Thank you. Can everyone see my PowerPoint?
We can see it. Good.
Thanks, Maria. You can go ahead and go to the next screen. We have broken down our presentation into a couple of different areas and we will get the opportunity to hear from all of us, I believe, here. First, we'll give a very, very high-level broad SNAP program overview. As Carla said, it's, it's pretty complicated, so can't, we don't have all day, as it would take to really get into SNAP. We'll talk a little bit about management evaluation, which is how we, as the state, monitor counties. Then Jennifer will share some information on SNAP enrollment data that we have and some other data that we have from studies we have done. And then we'll finish the presentation with some information about SNAP outreach from Maria and Michelle. So first of all, broad overview of SNAP. As Carla already mentioned, you know, SNAP provides nutrition supports to many low-income individuals. Last year, we served over 520,000 participants in the SNAP program. And SNAP not only helps families, but it also helps generate economic growth and activity. And on the screen, you can see that, you know, every dollar in SNAP benefits generates an estimate of $1.75 of new spending in a community. So SNAP is very valuable on an individual and also at a community level. And then households can choose to enroll. It is a program where households do have to meet specific eligibility requirements and follow some pretty specific application and recertification processes. The vast majority of these rules are set out at a federal level. And then as a state, we have a few options that a state can choose in between. But by and large, most, if not all of SNAP is really regulated by the federal government. So next screen. So in general, these are very broad, high-level eligibility requirements for SNAP. First, we must have a person's identity. We usually do that through a social security number or immigration number. Must be a resident of Colorado and a U.S. citizen or have a qualifying immigration status, and that is determined by individuals. So you could have a mixed household where you have some individuals who are eligible and some who are not. Additionally, how we determine who is considered a unit in a SNAP household is based on who lives together and when they live together, if they buy and cook meals together. Of course, that's a little complication. There are some, what we call, mandatory participants who are, have to be sort of brought together in a household. That's usually a relationship by marriage or like parent-to-child. They would have to be in the household together if they are living in the same home. Income is a huge consideration for SNAP in Colorado. Our, the income guideline for SNAP is at 200% of the federal poverty level. To determine that, we look at both earned and unearned income. And basically what that means is earned income is income from employment. Unearned income is income that's not from employment, so something like child support or social security income, things like that. We do count resources for some households, but not, actually not most, the vast majority of households, because we have a specific policy in place. We are able to look at that 200% FPL and then also are able to disregard almost all resources for the majority of households. And then there are work requirements for SNAP, especially for adults ages 18 to 49 who have no children and are determined able to work. They would have to meet those work requirements. And then benefits amounts are determined based on income and certain expenses, such as housing, utility, childcare, and medical expenses. So that was really broad eligibility requirements. Anytime, we can certainly get into more details if anyone would like and has the time. As Carla mentioned, Colorado is a state-supervised, county-administered state. We are one of 10 states, so most states in the nation, states and territories are state-supervised and state-administered. It does give SNAP a little bit of different flavor here in Colorado. But we still have the same requirements of monitoring the program as any state does across the nation. And one of the ways that we monitor and help supervise the administration of the SNAP program is through what we call management evaluation. Through this management evaluation process, we are required to review very specific things. Have them listed here on the slide. And then also, if we identify any like deficiencies in a county, a county is required to do a corrective action and then we track and monitor that. In addition to going out and reviewing counties, we also review on a monthly basis data reports, annual complaint logs, a mix of a lot of information for us to look at and review what's going on at the county level. And then in turn, FNAS does the same thing, the Food and Nutrition Service, which is the federal arm of the SNAP program. They basically do the same thing to us as a state. They come in and do a review of our processes through different audits and then they also look at our ongoing reports. So it's definitely a layered review of what's going on to help ensure that the program is running how it is intended to run. Next slide, a little bit more about management evaluations. We are required to break up our state into different sort of categories based on size. Our largest areas where we have over 25,000 individuals, household, sorry, we would have to review those counties on a regular base, on an annual basis. Pretty much for everyone else within the state, they are on a two-year cycle. But when we look at that, we are able to lump a lot of the small to medium counties into their own project areas. And so our medium project areas get a review every two years. And what that means is we're in that project area reviewing every two years, but we may not actually get to every county every two years. We just hit that area within. So Lake is in our southwest medium project area with 23 other counties. So it does take us a while to get through and see everybody, but we do our best to try to review counties. We are aiming to get there, to do it every five years. But often, things happen in our world that impact the work that we do. COVID was a good example of this. Through the increased need that COVID brought, we did put a pause to a lot of our management evaluation reviews and corrective action plan finalization in order for counties to have the time and space to meet the needs of the clients that they serve. Now that we have, you know, we're coming out of COVID, the end of the public health emergency is also happening, we are starting to work more intensely with our counties to resolve any open findings that we had from those paused plans. Some of that might be coming out and visiting the county. Some may be just doing some back and forth documents to ensure that we're able to close the findings. Another huge piece of SNAP that both as the supervising entity and counties, as the administering agency of SNAP, we always keep in mind program integrity. The first bullet is just a fancy definition of what program integrity is, but it really covers a lot of areas of SNAP: recipient fraud, retailer fraud, and then making sure that we are determining benefits correctly and not issuing payments incorrectly. So counties have that primary responsibility of ensuring program integrity. But CDHS, we also have a huge role. We provide guidance, support, and then we do some additional activities that also support program integrity. As noted, fraud is a piece of program integrity. And so we do require that counties have internal processes where eligibility workers can report suspicious or questionable information or inconsistencies to an investigator. Counties are required to make sure that their eligibility workers are educated so they are able to identify potentially questionable information or inconsistencies. However, even if this is identified, it does not always mean that a household is ineligible. It should mean that you determine that household eligible. And then a referral to a fraud investigation could be a second step to really have that time and space to determine whether or not fraud occurred or if it was just misinformation or a misunderstanding. And then the USDA and FNAS, as well as we as a state, encourage multiple avenues to detect fraudulent activity, including the use of social media in investigations. And in fact, a few years ago, FNAS came out with a nice toolkit to support states and counties on how to best use social media in investigating both retailer fraud and recipient fraud. So that was very high-level and quick. I don't know if, we want to pause for any questions or if we were going to just continue on.
I think I'll go to Janine and you can.
I think she said.
We have some more slides, sorry. We'll go ahead and I will hand it over to Jennifer to go over some of our data for Lake County and Colorado.
Thank you.
Thanks, Terry. Hi, everyone. These numbers are hopefully just to give you an idea of kind of where Lake County is a pulse of kind of enrollment. This graph shows back, as far back as 2016 for the case count, which is like a household as Terry had described. And then the client count is the individuals for Lake County over time. It's been pretty consistent with a pretty big increase in 2020 and that's accountable for COVID, most likely. You can go forward, Maria. And then this slide is another snapshot of some data we collect for SNAP applications. And you can see, again, a large spike, kind of the gray bars for the early parts of 2020 and then increases in 2022, the navy bars from May on throughout the year. And then I also wanted to share a project that CDHS engaged in with Share Our Strength, as well as some partners from the Deloitte USDA account team and some Health Prism data. And so the project involved basically using a Health Prism dataset from Deloitte and matching that with the SNAP participant data for the state of Colorado to identify who was enrolled and then to get a picture of who may not be enrolled in SNAP but is likely eligible. And so sharing some of the results relevant for Lake County. These are just the estimates of counts of folks that may be eligible and may not be participating in SNAP. There's always some caveats because, as Terry described, there's lots of nuances into eligibility. But for this study, they used like a poverty, total poverty level of two, I think it's 150%. And so there's, there's room for error, but we feel like these are representative numbers and to show you just some geographic distribution of where folks might be that could likely be eligible but are not likely participating. Another piece of the study, you can go forward, Maria. Thank you. So they have these unique personas, they call them. Deloitte is a clustering of, an intersection of kind of characteristics of folks based on like census information. And so these group characteristics are meant to kind of help for outreach purposes or to identify folks specifically that might need additional outreach and could be targeted to increase enrollment in the program. And as you can see, the numbers on the left side are those who might not be participating in our likely eligible. Total for Lake County is 1,380. And then from these various groups, I tried to match them up with some of the geographies on the previous slide. So as you can see, there's kind of particular groups and areas of folks that could be targeted for outreach. And this is just sort of a snapshot to see kind of where Lake County falls among our northwest and the mountain sort of region of Colorado. And the map shows the total population to kind of give a baseline for these likely eligible and likely not participating numbers that are in the table on the right. And in the map, the darker the county is, the larger the population. And so Lake County falls on kind of the smaller population among comparison with the other counties. And you can see where they are on the EBNE count compared to other counties here.
Thanks. I think I'm next. So if there's any questions, I'm just gonna continue and give everyone an overview of our state SNAP outreach. But before I talk about any program specifics, I do want to acknowledge that each county is doing their own outreach as well, specific to their local area. So the program that I will be mentioning moving forward is the state SNAP outreach. So what are we doing as a state agency to do outreach to SNAP-eligible participants? So this program is funded through USDA Food and Nutrition Services, so they provide 50% of the funding. And then we're very lucky that our state of Colorado provides the other 50%. So for the last few years, we've been able to fund all of our outreach partners fully, which I think it's great. And the purpose of SNAP outreach is to improve access to SNAP of SNAP by implementing effective strategies to inform, educate, and submit applications for eligible individuals. And I will be talking more about the strategies in the next few slides. I do have, I do want to mention that Um I do have, I do want to mention that um the SNAP outreach program is optional. So state agencies um that are administering SNAP have the option to conduct outreach, and Colorado has been one of the states that have said, yes, uh we're doing outreach in our state. And that's just because it aligns really well with our goal um to increase the number of Coloradans who can access food assistance by building the capacity of the outreach program. So there's some statistics here for you. Um about eighty-five percent of Coloradans who are eligible for SNAP are participating currently, and if you want, you want to compare that to the national average, that's eighty-two percent. So how do we implement SNAP outreach in Colorado? Um I think we have a very unique model. Uh we implement our program through outreach partners. So these are contractor um partners um that were identified through an official solicitation process. So we have an RFP, or Request For Proposal, that goes out every five years. And that's how we identify the current partners that we are working with right now. When um when an organization becomes a contractor partner, um they're able to get the funding, right? Um to be able to pay for all the different outreach that they're doing, they also get access to PPRO, um so they can help uh eligible participants apply for benefits. There's also potential for data sharing. Uh they do get technical assistance from the state. Um and she shows here, she's like doing this al- almost, I would say, every single day, um always being in touch with our reach partners and providing any technical um support that they need. Um and then, of course, they're part of the statewide mission, right, to address low um enrollment rates. Um so we have four um four contracted per uh partners right now. Um it's Hunger Free Colorado, Benefits Data Trust, Fear Insurance Bank, and Benefits In Action. It doesn't mean that they are the only ones doing outreach. Um like I mentioned before, we have this subrecipient model, which means that there's many other smaller organizations working under them. Um and and we like to do this model because it covers a larger geographical area um in the state. So for Lake County, we don't have any active outreach partner of subrecipient as of now. However, we do have a mobile and telephonic assistance through outreach partners. One of them being um Hunger Free Colorado Subrecipient Food Bank of the Rockies. So these are the types of activities our our reach partners do in order to um reach those eligible for SNAP. Um so as I mentioned before, our main goal is to have more people apply for benefits. So so they they do application assistance. They also assist clients um obtain it to obtain their application verification documents, again, reducing some of those barriers. Um they also disseminate information, uh you know, and mainly trying to reduce the social stigma there is um to applying for for government assistance programs. Um they do a lot of outreach in person as well. As an example of that, um can be going to a community event. Um they conduct outreach workshops with community organizations. They also create their own educational and outreach material materials, which I think is really cool. Um as I mentioned, a lot of them are in different geographical areas of the state, so they can tailor those materials to the need um of the community there. Um they have trained the trainer programs for SNAP outreach workers. Um some of the practices that they've been implementing lately have to do with EDI as well, so bridging that equity um gap. And and some of the um strategies they've been implementing is translating materials into multiple languages. They have also contracted with language lines. As we know, um not everyone in Colorado um speaks English as their main language, so we need to provide services, uh you know, the that, I guess we need to provide um strategies to make sure people, anyone, no matter what language they speak, they're able to apply for benefits. Um they also provide factual information about SNAP on social media platforms and websites, again, to reduce social media, but also they're being very innovative on how they're using technologies to make sure that they reach a broad range of people. And they also have a toll-free information line to provide information um to potential clients, and that's how we are reaching uh more people statewide. So I just wanted to show everyone this graph, um so you can see the growth um Colorado out the Colorado SNAP outreach program has had in the last five years. So these are three years, not two hundred years. And if you see the red line, it represents our overall goals for each of those years, so combining all of our SNAP outreach partners and sub recipients. And these are application goals, by the way. And then the green line is the actual application submitted. Um if you notice, we have been able to search our goals almost every year except for FY twenty nineteen, which again does not surprise me. Um this is when Covid hit. Um most likely, our outreach uh partners are doing outreach in person at this moment. So they had to pause all those efforts and like really be creative and think of other um technologies um they can use in order to reach more participants. And then of course, after having those changes, um all those new strategies seem to work pretty well as we exceeded those goals um the next few years. And then if you want to look at this through a geographical lens instead of number of applications, here are some maps for you to look at, so we can go back as far as twenty seventeen. Um the green represent the area where we have SNAP outreach in the state. Uh again, I want to just clarify, that doesn't mean that we have an in-person navigator at each county. It just means that through our lit, through the hotline, um anyone in the state is able to apply for benefits. Um but I think it also shows that the subrecipient model works pretty well, um because we're able to reach you know, a larger geographical area in the state. Um and lastly, um I just wanted to go through some challenges in rural Colorado. I I want to acknowledge that this list is not a full list of challenges that people go through in rural Colorado. Um I I also want to acknowledge that it doesn't tell everyone's story. These are just some common themes I heard from my outreach partners. I met with them um a couple weeks ago, and we just had a conversation, you know, about what challenges were were they seeing uh when helping participants apply for benefits in rural Colorado. So please don't don't think this is like all the challenges that exist. Um that would be a very bad interpretation. These are just some of them. Um so, you know, one of the challenges that I heard um come up was transportation, right? And and it can be, eh, this can be interpreted different different ways. Um going to the grocery store, um having transportation to go buy healthy foods. Um also having transportation to go to a store that accepts SNAP benefits, um or even having transportation to go to um their SNAP interview. Those are some of the things that I heard. Um I also heard working hours. Um it seems like some people work very long hours or also have a large commute um from home to work, and and that means that they're just away from home for a very long time. Um and that can prevent them from applying to benefits. Um weather conditions, I'm assuming this relates a lot to Lake County. Um we know this can prevent people from getting out of their home or applying um for benefits as well. Also, one of the biggest theme that I heard was food deserts. Um I don't know if any, everyone is aware of food deserts, or what what does it mean? But it basically means that um there's a store where you can purchase um food um near you within a certain mile radius, usually is one mile. Uh it might change definitely in rural areas. Um so there could be less location to shop with that benefit. And here's a quote um from a Lake County former resident who's also a benefits navigator um working with benefits in action. Um Seaway is the only store that accepts SNAP. And it's not far from the community, but it might be far for some, especially if you don't have that cut rate, that transportation. Um and then I also heard language um barriers. I think many of us have talked about it during this presentation today. Um but again, there are, there has been some strategies that have been put in place by our reach partners to be able to bridge that gap. And then lastly, just lack of resources available. I think we have seen that um you know, if you compare rural Colorado with urban Colorado, there are just less resources um that are available. So I think that's the end of my slides. Um thank you so much. I I'm assuming we're gonna open the room for questions now unless Carla or Terry have some final comments.
And let's go ahead and leave this last slide up for just a few moments in case anybody wants our contact information. You can uh through that, and we can of of course provide our contact information through other means as well, and I'm sure Janine has it too. Um but yeah, you can take any questions if there is time for that.
Great. Yeah, I think we'll have a lot. We'll have some time after uh Janine will kind of introduce us and do or do a presentation for us, and then we'll um I think we are open for
This is
A large time for questions. Yes, please.
Thank you.
Thank you all. And I, yeah, I'll do a quick overview of local stuff, and then we'll have question time, which I don't think it'll push you all into your time limits. All right, great. Thank, thank you all very much from the state. Um I appreciate all that feedback. I learn something every time. Um I'm not in this as much on the ground level, um and it's highly technical, so um it's always good to learn and know. Um again, just wanted to um remind folks that we're planning future work sessions on the language access and fraud policy and per um practices. And then um we'll there'll be a a facilitative discussion on this topic as well, held this spring. Um so this is um data from the CDHS website um accessible to folks um who can check this at any time. I think it's important to um recognize that we utilize, because we're a small county, we utilize CDHS for most of our data reporting. Large counties have entire IT staff that do nothing but run their data internally and analyze it and look at it all different ways. Um and we don't have capacity to do that, so um we rely on CDHS to end their reporting. Um and then we are able to take that, and we get quite a number of reports. And um again, that's something we will be continually monthly reporting out to the board and can provide that capacity, but could um provide it to anyone else who wants it as well. Um some of the monthly things that we get are the number of applications that come in, um how many redeterminations um in every program area, and then our timeliness uh on all of those as well. Um just relative, we saw some great data. I think it was really helpful for CDHS um to provide that and really good work that was just recently done um by our partners at Deloitte on looking at the eligible but not enrolled population, just at a very high level, looking at it across the board. If we were to look at how many um cases of SNAP we have in our community versus our total population size, comparing us to our northwest regional partners, which is often helpful for us in Lake County to do that, because we have, while there are some dissimilarities, there are many similarities, especially in our employment base being in our geographic areas, and some of the same barriers, which um we saw outlined similar. And I also work a lot with my northwest colleagues on some of these same issues. So we compare what's working. Um we compare our challenges and successes. Uh so this is um a comparison. You can, I mean, anybody can do this. The information is out there. You can compare it to any county.
Do you know, is that total population of the county?
Yes.
So it's not total, total eligible?
Right. It's a total population based on the US Census.
Okay. Do you know how
I I haven't run that. This was just a very, again, high level. That's another analysis that could be compared in there. If you wanted to break out those populations and do the AMIs of one twenty-five or one or two hundred, whatever level that you wanted to do. That is um another, the other thing that's interesting to look at as well with this is to look at counties across Colorado that are similar in population. A lot of those counties end up being south central um region. So comparing um poverty levels in those regions is also, I think, um helpful and interesting, and some of them do have higher caseloads. Um and it does, you know, vary on employment levels and um poverty levels as well. But just wanted to all to kind of see, this is how, as a northwest region, this is how we sort of look at it and compare ourselves and against each other and again, um evaluate problems and solutions and and try to come up with. Sometimes we come up with a great regional um answers, for example, for about at least five years, if not more. We had a regional technician that was housed in Garfield County that we all contributed to paying for that technician, and that technician did overflow work for eligibility for all of our counties. And um so if a county was experiencing a huge turnover or you know, dot lost two eligibility staff members and only had two left, they could put in requests to that overflow technician, and um they would essentially help work the additional cases. And that's a totally unique and creative solution that we came up with in our northwest region. And the state took that on and developed uh a statewide model where um the Department of Healthcare Policy and Financing actually has a backlog group now that helps work cases that are on backlog for counties trying to heat down that backlog um caseload for them. So the idea is that while we're all out there working on our own, if we can pull together um resources and help each other. Um and this, I would just say that regional collaboration was just phenomenal. And it came out of Grand County where he said, I just lost my eligibility supervisor, my one technician, and I've got a technician who's been there six months. I need everybody's help in this region. How, what can we do? So we try to be creative. We try to be nimble. We try to be thoughtful. Um and we're pretty proud of that in our northwest region. Yeah.
And that, and that position is is
It's not there anymore. I think it was two years ago. What happened is that Garfield Ha- County housed it, and they actually needed that staff person for their own work, and um it became pretty expensive to maintain it. We also looked at usage, and it tended to be a couple of counties that were needing it more than others. And so we looked at how those counties can resource and get support um internally as well. And it's not un- unlikely that we could bring it back if that was, if there was a need for that kind of thing. We've looked at doing other things regionally. Um the single entry point, for example, is done in this region for every county, but Lake, they do all of those things um collaboratively. We've done um quite a few projects. Last year, Lake County Human Services did the cybersecurity policy work, um and we did it for um all of our regional partners in the northwest region. So we actually took on that project. And um our project manager did that work for the whole, or created those policies and disseminated to all the northwest counties. Um so we work together a lot on projects like that. The other thing I'll say about our northwest region is we have a similar um labor force. So that's the other thing that really um drives us to working together, and language access is um uh an issue that we all work on solving um and and try to implement creative. For example, I think it was twenty fifteen, we did in Lake County, a bridging the gap training, um initial certification, and we had folks from region who came together. Um DHS staff and community members from um all counties participated in that too.
And I I had some similar questions to Mara as far as like other, you know, data sets to combine and compare and
Yeah, you can run it against a lot of things. Yeah. I really like the CDH's data because the challenge of determining how are you matching up the people enrolled with the people who could be enrolled is is a pretty tough narrative to do, um because poverty level, poverty guidelines capture a segment, but not necessarily everybody who qualifies. Um students, for example, fall into a really unusual category. Um it poverty level does not account for immigration status and things like that, so that recent data that they just um contracted for, I think, is So, um, that recent data that they just contracted for, I think is, is pretty, pretty solid. Um, Boulder County, my colleagues there have worked really hard to try to like break it down. It's been a lot of resources on trying to figure out exactly who's this population that we're talking about. Um, the other thing that's really tricky about SNAP, and I don't want to get too technical and have my staff go, wait a minute, you didn't say that right, um, was, is that, um, it's, it's a concept called churn. And what it essentially means is that people can be on benefits, but then come off of benefits. So there's like a rotation and there's a redetermination periodically. And so that category of folks who are on but haven't signed up again or completed their redetermination is a whole nother, um, sort of category of folks that are eligible, but for whatever reason may not have re-enrolled. We actually, as we were going through our SNAP list last night, we're saying, hmm, where's this person? Or where's that person? They're in, they haven't, you know, re-enrolled. And, um, they are, um, still eligible for our maximum assistance. But just, you know, again, our staff sort of have an inside scoop on what's going on with some of those folks. But, um, those are people that we, you know, try and stay in touch with and contact as well. So, and that's a piece of that eligible but not enrolled population too. So there's lots of ways to look at that data. Um, yeah, quit poverty, um, guidelines. This is January twenty-three. And, um, so just kind of thinking about this and what this population looks like, so I'm going to refer back to it later as I talk about some of our outreach. Um, Lake County, again, I, I think we've always valued customer experience, feedback. Um, try to, you know, I mean, I, I can't necessarily say that, um, that translates to everybody's experience or everybody's experience of how they've been able to give their feedback. But one of the things that we have created is a member experience advisory council or committee. Um, I believe we are the only, if not one of the only counties in the state that, um, created this off a similar model that's not at the state level. Um, and it's, um, folks who are Medicaid members and we asked for them to participate and give their feedback and create and improve the process. And it's pretty motivational for folks to feel like their input is being utilized to be able to improve the process for folks. Um, and we focused in particular on a, um, the what you should know portion of the application, um, which is a lot of information that's on there. And, um, they were able to provide feedback on that. Um, how they get the word out, misunderstandings, literally some of the, the word choice that was used in the, um, and translation and so forth. Um, outreach efforts, we heard lots of information on what Hunger Free has done, so I won't go into too much of this. Um, you know, typically outreach plans focus on, um, county partners, health providers, um, the individuals who want to recertify, that's that churn I was talking about, low income residents. Um, the folks in the Spanish speaking community and, um, hospitals, food pantry, students. Um, folks who are enrolled in Medicaid and could qualify for SNAP and emergency food pantry, um, participants as well. And so we heard a little bit about that and what Hunger Free has done and is doing. Just so you all know, um, sort of what it looks like when somebody turns in a document or application. So our frontline staff here, um, turn in, um, or receive, I should say, the applications. So it can be taken in person, drop at the drop boxes, with their check twice a day, um, submitted online during peak. And just to note, we're seeing huge, huge increases in online submissions. Um, and the frontline staff and our bilingual staff members follow up with applicants regarding questions about their applications to schedule phone interviews. If anybody ever brings anything to us and they don't hear back or they want to know the status of it, um, they're welcome to reach out. I will say the other thing about our communications is that we're doing a lot more texting and emailing, um, with folks too. It's sometimes it's much easier, um, for recipients to get a text message off of our, um, public assistance county phones than, um, trying to make a phone call, both on their end, taking time to make that call, um, or how many, or if they have minutes and things like that. So we're seeing texting. I know our staff in wraparound use the, um, WhatsApp app a lot in communicating with families. So we're always, and the state has looked a lot at texting applications. And, um, there's also an app out there too, that people can use to navigate their benefits. So we're continually trying to work on that. So once the staff gets the application, um, they do checks in, um, the Department of Motor Vehicles, Department of Labor and Employment, I work numbers for verifications for what's on the, um, what's on the application. And remember, this is specific to SNAP applications, but often applications are joint applications. So people can turn in on the same form. They can fill out, um, an application that includes their information for, um, for consideration in any, um, program that they might qualify for. Um, and in doing that, um, we can sort of cross check for, see what they, they might be eligible for. Um, the next step, particularly for SNAP, is an interview with an eligibility technician who then enters the data that they go through into the Colorado Benefits Management System. Once that required data is entered, um, the system generates an eligibility determination. And then the technicians read, um, with every applicant, they read the what you should know document, which is the SNAP rights and responsibilities. And then if they qualify and they're eligible, um, they're able to get their, um, BBT cards, um, either mailed to them or issued at our office. So the goal is to do all of that. And based on what's going on in the case, we have different timelines for all of that that are required. Um, as far as language access goes, um, all processes as required by law are done with an interpreter at the request of the applicant or staff member. Um, applications are available in English and Spanish. And at our office, um, technicians will ask applicants in the interview what language they prefer to have their communications in. And then that's indicated within the benefits management system. And so what happens is, um, then all communications going out, um, will get, um, sent out in that language. And then we're, as, as mentioned by our consultant, we're evaluating our internal and external workings of language access. Um, we have a language access policy now. And then we're looking at protocols on that. And then our, um, trying to create more access to live interpreters by having more robust network of interpreters. Um, we are funded for SNAP through county administration dollars. Um, in the, in the, um, current state fiscal year, which is July through June, we received a hundred and fourteen thousand. And that covers predominantly salaries, administrative, some of the administrative salaries spent on SNAP and a portion of our overhead. Um, just salaries in fringe alone for our public assistance staff are over two hundred and eighty-seven. Um, the funding is specific to the processing of applications. So the funding is for eligibility processing. Um, in the past, there's a small amount of funding has been available for SNAP outreach. And, um, that's a different pot. And, um, we, we wrote a plan for one year. The last year, we just continued with what we've been doing from a different, um, plot of money. And that, I would say that's different from the contract that Hunger Free has with CDHS. Um, you're fine. Um, so we've done most of our outreach historically, um, during, um, COVID through our community caseworker, um, who's housed out of wraparound, which is been a really great model, has worked really well. And I'm going to talk about that next. So this staff member, um, historically and currently is bilingual and bicultural, um, has extensive work experience working in wraparound. Nancy mentioned that she's been there six years, um, and assists with multiple applications, um, assists with recertification letters that a client receives. So what we try to do is when everybody, any, anybody has a question about, like, I don't know how to fill out this application or I got something in the mail, um, our frontline staff can answer those questions. But certainly if they're with any of our community partners, Nancy's available to help answer those questions. And she doesn't try to, um, pretend to be the expert. What she does is she'll call and liaise on and help get those questions answered, make sure it's understood. A lot of the times, it's, um, people just not quite understanding what they've received or what's being asked for. Or they'll get like a letter that says, we haven't made a determination yet. We need some more information from you. And they may perceive that as a denial. Um, and so it's, it's, it is complicated. So we want to make sure that we have resources available to get those questions answered. And we just really encourage folks to reach out to Nancy with any help and support, um, that they feel they need. Regardless of whether they started the application with Nancy, they could still, you know, call later too. Um, so our community caseworkers outreach plan, as Nancy mentioned earlier, very similar to what is best practice. Um, local hospitals, community health navigators, medical and dental clinics. Our own public assistance staff members will say, hey, if you want assistance with us, um, here's Nancy's information. Um, full circle, Cloud City, St. George's, um, school district. Uh, so the school district also refers as part of the wraparound program, any families that are experiencing homelessness to our staff for intensive case management. And one of the first things Nancy does within a sit down and evaluate their economic, um, stability and help them apply for application, help them do with applications if that's something they want to start doing. Going on the mobile learning best.
Yeah. So. So yeah, do we have funding for outreach now to fund that specific position or is that just some of these?
So the funding for this, and this is, yeah, so the funding for it started during COVID when, um, we recognized that this was a big need and the commissioners put some, um, recovery money behind it as a halftime position. And then it grew, actually it might've been a full, I think it was full time to start with. Um, and then, um, what we did later is we have also some funding from LEAP specifically for outreach. So we have a nice chunk from LEAP and then we charge some of it to, um, to county administration. But the other thing that really works well, um, the piece that we can charge to county administration is, is like actually getting the application through the process. Um, the thing that works really well is because it's housed within wraparound and it works in that, it's also part of care coordination. So working with a family that's in crisis, helping them establish their economic security needs and then helping them with applications is actually what wraparound is funded to do. Um, so that works really well too. And then the other thing I want to point out is that our, our conversations we've had with the commissioners is to continue to grow that, um, and have more casework, community casework available for our growing Spanish speaking population in the county. Um, it could be anything from grant funding. There's, um, a number of different funding options that we can use. Our wraparound program, just to kind of step over there for a second, is a really, um, well-refined combination of blending and braiding of funding. So the wraparound program is funded by, um, collaborative management funding, which is through our inter-agency oversight group. And that is available to us through House Bill fourteen fifty-one to work with families that are at risk with the goal being prevention of, um, out of home placement and child welfare cases and, um, diversion from, um, the criminal justice system. So that's a piece of that funding. The other piece of that funding is child welfare funding. And the, uh, and then the third piece of that primary is, um, core services funding, which is behavioral health funding that's available, um, specific for child welfare populations. And it can include prevention. So because all of those things come together, that's just a piece of it. They also get funding for McKinney Dunto with the school district for partnership with that, for working with homeless families. So that's where care coordination falls within that work that Nancy does in, um, helping establish the stability for that household.
Sorry, uh, sort of unrelated question. Do we really have state folks on for a certain time period? Do we know?
Um, what's your time limit, Carla?
I believe that most of us are able to stay on for quite a while. So.
Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you.
Um, so that's how community caseworker outreach works. Our new program, which we're launching, um, ties to TANF. And TANF stands for Temporary Assistance for Needy Families. It's also the same as cash assistance. It's all part of the same as, um, I don't know, just people tend to think of it typically as like welfare. But what it is, is falls into two categories. And this is something that the larger counties have really, um, sophisticated and, um, highly refined resources around how to maximize this. A lot of small and mini, medium counties have not necessarily been able to engage in some of this other work. Um, so we're very excited to do this, but there's two categories of TANF. Um, one is TANF enrolled, and that means folks who are eligible to receive TANF monthly assistance, um, because of income and a number of other qualifications. But there's a whole nother category of TANF eligible. It's really captures a lot more folks in our community. And that is any household in which there's children, children under the age of eighteen, there's less than seventy-five thousand dollars in income, and there's somebody in the home who's a legal permanent resident. Those folks are eligible for, um, financial supports that tend to be, um, short term. So it could be, and short term is pretty broadly defined too. It could be one or two payments or whatever that looks like. So what the, um, board has agreed to do, um, upon recommendation is to allow us to launch this financial assistance program, um, which will involve our TANF case manager working with families who step forward and say, hey, we'd love to get some help with something, assessing their need. Um, and then the first step is to see if there are public assistance programs that they'd like to apply for and they're eligible for, um, including SNAP. So we hope that this broadens that category. We did see a lot of this happen during COVID, um, when, when the same, um, group of folks were eligible for assistance. And one of our first steps was to see if there were public assistance programs that they could qualify for. So, um, the, the type of, um, population that we want to target with this is, um, particularly the household size that we talked about earlier, that I showed earlier, was, um, families. Um, which we can't assume that all households of three are, are necessarily families or four or five. Um, and families defined as in the, what I just showed in the last slide was kids under eighteen, um, in the household. So by doing this though, and offering this assistance, it's our goal to try to make sure that folks that, um, are in this population understand the benefit of SNAP and how it works and are given the opportunity to have assistance with applying if they'd like. Um, and we expect this might be pretty popular. If you wouldn't mind really quick, I'll just, I'll wrap this up and then we'll get to it. So hold on. Thanks very much. Um, so we expect that there'll be a strong interest in this program because of all of the things that we can offer. So the goal for this is education. Well, first of outreach. The next step is education and, and then the third step is that application assistance, trying to address those barriers that have shown up. These are the things that the TANF financial assistance can cover. Um, and it's broad. Um, so.
That's a good clarifying question. Um, the, the numbers that you had there that are based on household, are those folks who are eligible for SNAP that are a part of TANF now?
No, good question. Those are folks that are receiving SNAP right now. Those are the number of households of those sizes.
So they're already, already enrolled?
Yep. Yep. And our goal, very good question. So it probably wasn't clear. Our goal, right now, we have like twenty-nine free people households, twelve, and this is in SNAP. Our goal is to target people in a similar demographic to that and grow these, some of these numbers as possible.
To grow the TANF assistance for those.
No, no, it's to grow SNAP through TANF. Does that make sense?
Not based on those household sizes, but on people.
Okay, okay, okay. Yeah, good. And I, you know, I'm, I'm happy to go through it with anyone and/or if there's better ways of explaining it. So anyway, what we're going to be doing is offering this financial assistance program to folks and talking to them about SNAP in the process. And here's all the things that folks can request help with. And I know we'll be collaborating with our community partners, some of whom provide a lot of this. So it could be things like, hey, this agency can do this much, could we pick up and do, you know, the next month? And, you know, that's the extent of what we can do, or what does that look like? But we're excited to be able to use this financial assistance. There's lots of ways we also use financial assistance in this community that we plan to expand, including direct payments to community agencies for a lot of this kind of thing too. So. Yeah. Can we purchase more TANF dollars? Yes. Good question, Commissioner. So the thing about TANF that's exciting is we get an allocation, a block allocation, but we can purchase more money, more TANF dollars from other counties.
And use rate.
Yeah, well, all we pay is the MOE on it.
Yeah.
And so we can, as big as we can dream it, and if commissioners want to approve it, we can do it. So the data that we're going to be collecting on this is what our community caseworker captures on how many folks were educated about SNAP, were offered application assistance, were provided with application assistance. And then also folks who, if they say, no, I'm not interested, then we then identify what some of those barriers might be and provide some additional education. And then if they, you know, still say, no, no thank you, we'll document that. So, you know, biggest part of this is data collection. And then, so to your point, asking about those families and who they are, that's one group of folks that we're going to look to grow. Then going forward, we'll work in other areas. It could be students, it could be elderly and disabled. You know, in that, in that research that I pointed out by Deloitte, there's single women households who are, who might be older and may not understand that they're eligible. Elderly and disabled, yeah.
What is the outreach component to bringing this with TANF? It says like future SNAP outreach target populations, and it's been talking about SNAP outreach. But the way that you described it is if somebody comes in to ask about TANF, then they'll get this additionally?
No, what we're going to do is we're going to promote the TANF financial assistance program.
In what way?
However we can, you know, through partnership with you all, promotion, we're going to do ads in the paper. You know, is there something your household could benefit from? Getting the word out. It, it can be our current caseload, so it could be folks who are coming in. But it's sort of a little like with COVID, it's like, hey, there's some assistance available and there's a caseworker who can meet with you and talk to you about what those needs are. I mean, we hope to promote it with employers, we hope to promote it every way that we can so that it reaches a really broad group of folks and then have conversations as well about all the options we're available. Yeah, yeah.
A, a previous slide identified three, four, and five-person households as the target populations, and they're not on this slide, which is the target populations. Can you?
Yeah, this is where we would look at in the future. So what I'm thinking of is like, we'll start with this group and we'll see how that goes and what we learn and what data we collect. And then these are future folks that I think in our community could be potential areas for outreach and growth too. Again, you know, it's not an exact science. So what I, what we did is when we looked at this and said, you know, we don't have as many families. I don't know if that's as many families as we could have, but I looked at this. And so I can flip back if you guys want. When we look at all our overall caseload, we have predominantly single households. Right. So that's where we're seemingly to be doing a lot of casework already. 162 single-person households, 52 two-people households. And then the numbers drop for those larger family sizes.
Right, you have two income earners.
It could, you know, I don't know for sure what it is. It could be income, it could be awareness, it could be their lives are busy and complicated. This is, so, but we figured we're going to be talking to that income-based folks anyway. And doing this work, this is a great opportunity with, Renee is our, actually our TANF caseworker, and she's been with the department for a long time, so she's really knowledgeable on all the programs too. So she can walk people through a lot of that. I think I'm almost done. So the data that we'll be collecting, that we'll be reporting out are things like, how many folks did we educate about SNAP? How many were offered application assistance? How many received that assistance? And those barriers and the reasons for declining. And then we'll of course be looking for learning opportunities from that. What did we learn so that we can take that on to some of the other populations that we want to work with? And then we'll be reporting monthly to the V O C C. I mean, the purpose actually of doing this work session today is so we can say, hey, we have these ideas, we have this work we've been doing, we have these ideas on the way to grow it. We want to do this and we want to report back to you on how it's going. And what we'll specifically report on is the community caseworker work, the outreach assistance through the TANF case manager and the TANF program, the data we've collected, what our actual enrollment numbers and caseload numbers are, how many re-certifications we've done, and opportunities for collaboration with all of us. And I think I'm finished.
If you want to stop that share.
Oh, sorry.
No, you're good. Then I can.
I'll get this back to you. Trying to think if there's anything that maybe clarified or anything that I need to say one more to. I think that's it. CDHS, did you have anything to say or state or clarify before we go into questions?
No, I think we're good. Thank you.
The, the TANF-eligible is really that big, broad category of folks. And that will be our goal to reach out to those. Okay.
Well, okay, so. So you can be on TANF for a total of 60 months in your lifetime, is that correct?
It, that's the TANF-enrolled category.
Yeah, so if I'm on for three months and then I'm off for two months, then I'm on for three months.
Just you requalify.
Okay.
Right?
Yeah, and, okay, so then would you say like the requalification process for SNAP and TANF is like a pretty similar? I know, yeah, or is it like?
I would say if you qualify for TANF, you qualify for SNAP. TANF qualifications are really high, income-wise.
Yeah, and do you have to? I know sometimes with TANF, you have to, there's like, there's less autonomy. You have to, you know, make like a management plan for this is how, do you, yeah, how do you reconcile?
And that, that's, that's TANF-enrolled and that's TANF-intensive case management piece, which will be different than the TANF-eligible short-term assistance. But good to know both, but they'll be different.
Okay, but.
Does that make sense? So there's non-intensive case management with the short term. And the only qualifications are children under 18, $75,000 in the household, and a legal permanent resident. They're eligible. And then you can apply for it, you can meet with the N A and say, I need all of these things. And then she'll help go through and say, hey, well, it looks like brochure bill could be helped by applying for this. Let's see if you qualify for that. Or, you know, what's the biggest barrier? The biggest barrier is cars broke down, can't get to work, let's focus on that. So that's, so that's separate than the TANF-enrolled. Our TANF-enrolled is around a dozen or less typically on a regular basis. It is more involved, it's 60-months window, more case management.
Okay, yeah, so I just, I know like in the 2020 report, a lot of people were like, you know, it's super hard to keep up with appointments, information, et cetera. So do you expect that it'll be easier on TANF or will?
The TANF-eligible, there would be none of those requirements. The financial assistance.
Other than the monthly enrollments?
No, that's not required. The only thing they'll need to do is come to Renee and say, here's the things I need. And they can help sort out, and it'll just be like a one or two-time payment that we get. The difference is the folks who are enrolled long-term get a monthly amount on an ongoing basis. So it's really more like a short and long-term. Stephanie, did you have something you want to say or clarify?
Yeah, I guess I'm just wondering if, yeah, state one in four, you know, like.
Yeah.
I don't know, like SNAP, you're given your certain allotment monthly, you can count until your recertification comes up, but you'll get that. Do you think that the one-time payments will stabilize?
What it's meant to do is address those short-term crisis components. And the design behind it really, because TANF is really a work.
Yeah.
Back-to-work thing. So it's like, hey, what's showing up that's a barrier for you? I mean, tires aren't replaced, don't have child care, can't afford it. There's complicated things like that and, and more beyond that in Lake County. But I don't have the training and education I need. Or I could, if I got the certification, I could go from the seller to the seller, let's get to that. It could be uniforms, it could be, it's really that petress, kind of those crisis points and that helping them get over that. And the research shows that helping families get past that can keep them from falling into some of those longer-term categories that then cause maybe long-term reliance.
Yeah, and I think I was like conflating.
Yeah, yeah, it's totally, I understand.
TANF will be like the tool, our tool belt, but we'll also have separate SNAP goals.
Yes, yes, yeah.
My understanding of whatever posing is that the TANF caseworker, as they're like having conversations with TANF applicants, would then also do some SNAP outreach? And then are the TANF benefits assistance folks the same folks that do SNAP? Or would it be referrals or different benefits assistance?
No, it would be to our benefits. I mean, the application then goes to our benefits staff who work it. And we'll be in communications with folks all the way along that process. But the caseworker can also hope that those questions come up along. Yeah, and the goal is definitely collaboration. So you're right, it might be that it helps that family through that crisis, but we need to know what else is out there so that we can figure out how to, how to, you know, piece it together over time until that goal, you know, is reached. And that's sort of the, yeah.
Is there a goal of, of how much you're hoping that this will increase the, the folks who are enrolled? The, or the percentage of folks who are enrolled?
This is in SNAP?
Yeah.
I don't, I haven't set those numbers. What I would say is our first step is the outreach numbers is to talk to everybody that we can about SNAP. How that translates to enrollment, I think we're just going to have to see because I, I don't know that we know enough. We can definitely talk, you know, talk as a community too. I just hadn't felt comfortable yet saying, yeah, you know, like 30% of the people we talked to are going to say, let's go ahead and fill out the application. We could set those numbers, we could definitely do that, we just.
Do you have a sense, because you said it's, it's been patented in, in larger communities, not so much in smaller communities, but like for the communities that they've done this model.
That's a good question.
How much of an increase?
Yeah, that's a good question. I could definitely research that. Arapahoe County, for example, has an entire transitional housing program that they use their TANF dollars with. And they have care navigators that do this kind of thing with their staff, all paid for by TANF. And they probably have some good data on how much they've been able to help people access benefits. Yeah.
I'm jumping. Thanks for providing data. I know that's been a, a challenge, I think, is like finding a dataset that everybody agrees on is, that everybody agrees like is valid data.
Yeah.
So it's helpful to see this dataset presented. I'm wondering if either the county tracks this data or if the, the state provides it in the monthly, monthly data that they share with you around case, caseload, applications with the racial, with their race and ethnicity.
Breakdown, yeah. Carla, do you have, did you get to hear that? Okay, you want me to repeat it?
I, I think the question was if the data is collected for race and ethnicity, is that correct?
Yes.
It is true.
Yeah, so it's, it's a really slippery slope. So what I will say is that there is some data collected and it is not necessarily considered data with high integrity for us, and there's a number of reasons for that. One is that it is, it's self-disclosure and somebody can choose not to disclose that on their application. And then the other is that there, there has been historically, what I would say is conflicting guidance from the USDA, Food and Nutrition Services, on how that data should be collected. And at one time, there was a guidance from the USDA that indicated that if an individual did not self-disclose their race or ethnicity, that the worker should basically put their best guess. So the data itself is, is relatively skewed and it is just not considered valid or usable data. Jennifer, is there anything that you would want to add to that or Terry?
No, and the question I think was specific to like our reports about application status during a week. And we do not collect any specific democratic, demographic data within those reports where we report on like what's pending, what's been approved. That stays very high level with like case number, application date, processing date, things like that.
So I guess I'm wondering, some of the, some of the data has demographic information, whether it's age or disability status, gender are all included in that, but race, ethnicity is not. Like we don't have access to that data? Is that, am I, am I?
It's weird that when I was at the state at ICUP, we had the same issue with Medicaid data because it is self-disclosure, self-disclosure. So it's not, we can't like easily validate the dataset.
Right, but most race, ethnicity data is self-determined, right, on all datasets?
There's no checkbox on, there's no checkbox here that indicates that it's been self-reported. So the data is not valid. From the same.
It's actually, it was, it's, and I'll just say, it's one of the things that came up in our management evaluation is that there's, our staff were not consistently documenting that, and that's a tough thing. So if a client doesn't identify, the box still has to be checked by that staff.
Oh, that's still, like what she, oh, I thought that was past practice. That's still current practice.
That's current, still current federal guidance, yes.
And there's no, did not, did not disclose checkbox, there's no.
No.
Kind of hard to do on spelling too.
And if that's federal, that's.
Yeah, so we want to advocate for some change.
I have to, I have two parts, then maybe I'm in the wrong lane here, but like, but then when people do the enrollment application online, do they, is where they still has to try to?
Any application has to have that box checked.
I ask a good question, I, you can just make a comment. It's a comment. I would like to propose that like we, we use eligible but not enrolled as, as a data point and not like percent of total population or raw number of cases as a benchmark for how we're doing. I think the, the, the other numbers are helpful from like a, an office perspective, right? Like how much capacity my staff has and, and how much our, our workload is increasing or reducing. But in terms of effectiveness of outreach, I think it's a good compared, so percent of eligible and not enrolled compared to number of cases, right? Because either we can do a great job with outreach and get folks who are eligible and non-rolled enrolled, and that number goes up, or we do a really bad job as a community and like gentrification does the work for us, and like the people who are eligible have to move out of town, and our number of eligible but not enrolled goes, goes down as well, right? So comparing those two numbers side by side, it's helpful to see, you know, because ideally what happens is that our number of eligible but not enrolled folks goes down and our number of cases goes up. And then we, we know looking at those two numbers in comparison, that is great.
Yeah, I totally agree, and that, that's actually always the goal. The challenge gets to be how is eligible but not enrolled defined? And so I just want to clarify, if you're proposing that we use what their data.
Yeah, CDHS put up a number, I think it was 1384 of people who are eligible, right? And so we divide the 500 folks that were in current. Of people who are eligible, right? And so we divide the five hundred folks that were currently receiving benefits over a hundred and eighteen, thirteen and four.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah. That's, yeah, that is the hardest thing. And this is the most current and best research data we've had because it's initially.
Right, and like, we're not, we're not publishing a research paper or anything.
Right.
To be like, exactly, as long as we're using the same data set year over year.
Yeah. Yeah, and the one thing that happens that shows up, um, is that it's not a static process too. So somebody doesn't get enrolled and stay enrolled. Definitely that turn happens where it's like this month, and we see a huge seasonal cycle. That's the other thing that makes us similar to our regional partners is that we have a lot of folks who enroll in off season. Um, you know, you know, not recertified during, um, the busier ski season. And then, so, so that number, there is some, and we can kind of look at that too, like, how does that and fluctuate? That's where that attempt to try to make sure that people recertify, um, helps and our staff, you know, is always doing that too. I think giving out SNAP marks a lot of assistance helps. So when people are like, hey, I was on in the last couple of years, I didn't turn in my paperwork, but can I still get this? And then we can talk about that too, so. Carla?
Thanks, Janine. Uh, just wanted to mention a couple of things about the data that we shared from, with the eligible but not enrolled. Um, the first is that there are two components of that that are kind of caveats to this data. One is that it does not take into account or is, is not able to identify a lawful presence and therefore that component of eligibility. Another is it doesn't necessarily take into account potential liquid assets that a household may have because it was, uh, US census data primarily that was used. Um, and then the other component is, uh, this was a pro bono project that was done on our behalf last summer. It is not unfortunately something that we can do again, uh, not without a, a huge infusion of funding potentially. Um, and, and then we would also want to try to engage, you know, the same group in order to continue the methodology, methodology and ensure consistency. But it will, it will be, make it impossible almost to see a year over year change because it was a one-time, uh, data set for us.
But I wonder if there's a number or a, a data set that everyone could agree upon because I think it's really helpful and does, you know, show a need, um, and it's a great indicator for progress, that with, just with the numbers in that report, um, with Lake County being at thirty-three percent and Colorado being at eighty-five percent, that does show room for improvement. Um, and a lot of opportunity, I think, to bring in collaborative funding and, you know, work together to get this number up. Cause this is something that I think everybody in this room, I'm like, there's a lot of people in this room, um, that are invested in making a change in this area because of all of the economic impact, um, and benefits that families get outside of just food on the table. Um, it also has so many positive impacts, which is why we're all here. Um, so I'd love to, through this work session, be able to discuss some data set, something, even if it's, as long as we're using it consistently, I think if that's okay. If we're over, under, um, uh, estimating folks who are, who are eligible, taking out, um, things like people status, um, assets, things like that, that you have to consider in the applications. But if we can choose, okay, a hundred and fifty percent or property line or something like that, um, that we're implementing consistently, then I think we can have an indicator that everybody, can keep an eye on and, and work towards improving.
Sure.
And do we have two numbers of like the outreach portion too? Cause it's kind of my understanding through other programs and maybe this is not what you were exactly saying, but like the TANF folks know the breadth of the benefits available to the people that they are talking to, but the data points collecting of like reason for denial have not always been data points that have been collected because that's not required. And so I think that is also like in that ongoing conversation of, okay, we are looking at agreeing on data sets and also like that outreach piece will inform how those data sets can continue to get determined and we can know that they are more accurately representation, act, more accurate representation of our community. Um, so that information is gonna take a while, right?
Yeah, those will be exact numbers. I mean, that's one of the benefits is that we'll know exactly how many people were presented with the opportunity, who would have qualified and did or didn't.
And we can say, like, I mean, we can also agree on other, maybe more easily obtainable numbers of like, we'd love to hit at least like eighty percent of our families in our school district. And do we know that our teachers are trained on TANF benefits and SNAP benefits? And can we even ask them to add that to the menu of questions or, or like the, in the conversation that they have, that they may have with administration or as they report, like is there something else that they can provide to your staff that would, you know, highlight and flag?
Yeah, you're absolutely right. The outreach numbers and the enrollment numbers go in tandem because the more we can, um, identify who we've talked to and whether those end up in applications and enrollment, um, the more we see what impacts the enrollment numbers as, um, as well. So they are important to be in tandem. One of the things I want to, to propose is that, um, I don't know, I think we should spend some time looking at the data and looking at what they presented to before, like.
Agreeing today.
Yeah, agreeing to specific.
I think there's more, yeah, maybe today we should say like, hey, I'd love to see the company, cause I, I don't think it is like super valuable that like overall population because those demographics could be divided. So, yeah, crazily between Route County and Pickering County, I can appreciate the point you brought up about like the transportation, the weather, the ski resort, you know, those kind of.
Yeah.
Exterior, um, challenges or barriers, but I don't, I don't understand from those numbers what that means in the numbers. And I think that if there's a better way, we can actually, like, what other numbers can we provide, like regarding transportation and all that, or for those specific challenges that would better eliminate other pathways?
Was it Deloitte?
Yeah, we can ask, I think we should ask for that report and we can also then look at it.
Look at methodology. I think like,
Go through, yeah.
If, if we can choose a number that doesn't need like so much massaging year over year, right? Like, it, it'll be a rough estimate, right? Like thirteen eighty-four is not like the number of individuals that we're trying to get enrolled, right? But just like as, as a marker of progress or, or hitting benchmarks, right? I, I think even if we can acknowledge that it's imperfect and it's not like, uh, like an actual number that we're trying to hit, but it's just tracking and it's consistent and tracking return.
Yeah, I'm gonna, there's a couple of people behind you. Yes?
I think this is a great community collaboration coming up with what are, what are the. So I think something else to consider is really understanding from the applicant's perspectives, what, uh, what are the barriers for applying and actually getting enrolled in SNAP? And I think that that provides context for those numbers as well and, and perhaps some strategies for overcoming stigma or other things that are really common, you know, across the board list map enrollment, not just in Lake County. And, um, to really understand what are those barriers from a systemic perspective? That this isn't at an individual level, but it's really looking across the system and what can be changed within the system so more people can have access to SNAP.
Yeah, and that's, that was really sort of the creation of this community caseworker position during COVID and continuing it was to sort of make it, take it to the people as much as possible. And what we find.
We're working in partnership with community as well.
Yeah, and the wraparound, you know, program is designed on a team approach with, in collaboration with that, um, total wrap process. Um, and, and that's, I think where we sort of perfected that and can expand it to folks who are necessarily even in that process or engaged in that. And we've done that, I mean, the mobile learning bus, going out, talking to folks, um, and really, yeah, looking for that.
Well, I think, yeah, like, let's talk today about, a bit about like what we wanna help collect. And then I think also like agreeing on what also those data points are that we agree to collect ourselves because I think that helps with like the concrete information sharing. Mara and then Christian are folks.
Um, yes, um, yeah, and I don't know what our goal today. I love agreeing on data. Um, I just, kind of similar to what Amy said, I do think we need to consider qualitative data as well because whether it's true or not, we know that in a small community, certain stories are past.
Absolutely.
Shared. And so, yeah, and like cultural, cultural relevance as well, you know, we have the pantry, we collect a lot of numbers. Um, but the best information we get is from the one-on-one conversations. Um, so yeah, I just, I love agreeing on quantitative data, but I think I'm really actually excited about this because I feel like we have a lot of folks in the room that want to do, you know, systemic collaboration. But yeah, I, if, when we get to the point of designing solutions, I think those, you know, and we've, yeah, we've collected those stories, um, since the twenty fourteen studies. So we can kind of take that and use that as our specific information.
Yeah, absolutely. There's, there's definitely a role for the qualitative piece, um, and doing whatever we can to reduce barriers. Um, what we can do to help people feel safe, secure, um, reduce fears, um, whether that means they talk to, you know, your agencies or, you know, talk directly with Nancy. They know there's gonna be someone helping them through the whole piece and they can come to them and say, I don't understand what I just got in the mail or what does this look like? Um, whatever that.
Yeah, yeah, I think everyone's probably sick of me talking about it, but Mesa County did an incredible job. They did, you know, they started with a community-wide strategic communications plan about benefits, enrollment, um. Yeah, and then they really did a holistic approach. They focused on like education and medical systems, um, because that's what was most helpful for them. But I think, yeah, once we get to our solutions, should really use them as a case study and they've been so fantastic. They've come and spoke to the Food Access Coalition like three separate times, um, over the past couple of years. So they're very interested in helping.
Yeah, Mesa is great. And Michelle Trujillo did a great job, um, with the grant work that they had expanding that down there. Um, I think it would be really good as we work on this and the data that we collect to see what that looked like in a resort community. Um, with, that have predominant cash and the seasonal, um.
Yeah, there's more students where we.
Yeah, yeah. Students will throw that off like boulder and.
Yeah, but they did such a, yeah, they did such a great job despite the fact that a lot of their population are students. They're, they're still up to like eighty percent enrollment, um, in, in a population where not a lot of people should be eligible. So they did a really good job.
Yeah, I know a lot of what they did with their outreach partners was to do some basic education too, like just to help, how to help prepare the person that you're talking to and outreach for sort of what that experience will look like.
Yeah, and from everything, they inserted it into the childcare providers, you know, if you were enrolled at their college, you could get a credit to become a SNAP ambassador in the community, like, yeah, so.
Yes.
But yeah, I'm excited to, to have you on the, on the coalition. And Renee has been helping a lot on our strategic, strategic communications team, so.
Um, I guess on that point of collecting, uh, qualitative data, I think it'd be more to know where we're at as a community. And that there's a very high chance that a lot of community members aren't gonna feel comfortable sharing that data in a public way where their name is attached to the idea. Unfortunately, we've inherited the system where retaliation was a very real thing and in many ways still felt um, today and many actions that may not be retaliation, may be interpreted of retaliation due to just sheer nature of being in that situation where you have been retaliated against previously. So not to say that anyone here has done any of that or that any of us have an interest in doing that, but that it just might be the case that we may not be able to get direct names tied to these direct stories because of the intensive fear of our community and of especially our Latino community. I can speak from personal experience as well. And I know it's anecdotal, but it, it's just really important that we remember that, that, you know, we can't just jump to say, hey, we want people to sign on to these ideas. I, I know it's important for us, but I think if the people trust the partners that you're gonna work with, um, whoever that may be, to tell them, so them give you the feedback ticket as what it is, as if someone did give you a name. Is at the end of the day, people are gonna have specific groups that they trust, which may be different groups for each different individuals based on their experiences. Especially in a system like this where it does feel very broken. So I would just implore that we, you know, have some sort of system built that partners can give feedback that they've heard from clientele so that there can be work done on those sorts of areas, if it's untrue, and that's fine. Um, but at the end of the day, there should be some type of system in place that allows people to give that feedback to their trusted representatives and being okay with the fact that they are representatives of the ideas and they're not here just to BS you or cause issues. There might be some, and that sucks, but I think it still is worthwhile to get the that type of system in place. And I would love to see that, maybe not today, because I know that's intensely complicated, but at some point be a part of our um, process while we are rebuilding, uh, governance, uh, trust between people who live here regardless of their status and, uh, our local governance.
And those stories are believed like far enough and we don't question, we don't take them blame. You know, and we don't do that kind of crazy making behavior, you know, to someone shares their story. We're like, well, prove it, you know, like that, that's extremely harmful.
Well, and perception is perception. So and that's that person's experience. What I think we do and we sometimes add to that trauma is if there could be clarification or resolution, because as you said, it could, and that's a lived experience that somebody's, if I say something or if I do something or, you know, so part of that is also what's my perception of how I access benefits and who gets them and who doesn't? And what does that look like? Um, and, and was this personal or was this the way it works, right? Because as much as we can, we want to try to help bring the healing component to that. As this wasn't about you and a person and somebody in the office doesn't like you. This is protocols and, but it comes across as impersonal many times. So I think as much as we can collect and gather that, but then also see what are the patterns that are showing up for folks, like there's a belief about this, there's a belief about that. What can we do? And you've heard, you know, X amount of stories that kind of fit this narrative. It's not to dismiss that that's happening, but, um, to be able to say what is going on with that, behind that? Like, we live in a racist society that of course people are gonna feel like they're already on guard and they're already alert and this is the experience that they're gonna have. And it's not to say that's not a component or to minimize that, but what can we do to help people feel like those fears are addressed or, you know, whether it's, you don't have to, you can come to the office, somebody will come to your home and talk to you about it. And the trust will talk to you about it. What does that look like? Like what is, what does that mean for your comfort level and for your feeling of safety? So to acknowledge it in that way. Um, and, and I will say, Lake County and our department, we try to be as creative as possible and we try to be as nimble as possible. And we try to really think about what could work. And sometimes it's definitely our, you know, we think it might be helpful, but it's not perceived as that way. So, um, I would like to think that during COVID, we developed a really robust system for people feeling like, I can text this person and I can get an answer and I can get this and I can get that. Let's make it as simple and streamlined as possible. How can we do that? Again, or, you know, take those stories and that validation and, um, and, and provide a system that works as the best that it possibly can. And there are still gonna be people saying, no, thank you. Now, we just have to be okay with that too. And then, but then address that, how many people are saying, no, thank you. They really don't want that, but there's still a need. So what could that look like in a different way too?
Also, I also wonder, like, and I don't think we ever need like specific names of people, but I think it's, it's, and I think through my experience, like it's, it's not even necessarily, like if you all, if, if, if folks outside the human services staff understood like, well, okay, here's my checklist. I understand like what I need to ask about eligibility or clarifying questions. You, I think through these conversations, that will be learned much better, although I think there is a general under, like a basic understanding. But, I mean, it's even like the approach of, somebody approaches you immediately and then you run down that list and they're in this state. I think it's probably a better back and forth of like, let me take this, let me bring this to somebody in human services. You go through the questions in return so that it's like this process of kind of healing and thinking and processing, um, rather than just it ever feeling like an interrogation for clarification because.
Yeah. Can we do that though? Without having like people in access, can we?
Can we do like pre-eligibility screening as community partners?
Well, that's part of what we can talk about.
Yeah, like I think. Yeah. Yeah, you know, I think unfortunately, unless we have somebody trained in either like P1 and it still has to go through C3, DHS, and VHS. Yeah, unfortunately, I don't think, we can do education and outreach, but generally, generally you can't be like, hey, I don't think you're eligible.
And like here, yeah, as I am trying to go through the process, the benefit process, that's where that's.
But you could, so if the client wants you to get on the phone or?
Exactly, yeah, we can refer to Human Services staff and that may be supporting them so they can field all this call, all these like
Right.
clients, but, but yeah, unless you're certified.
So the state actually releases a toolkit every year that our local DHS department could share with us. I don't think it's ever been shared with any of our community partners, but there is a toolkit that we have access to online that will, like is a basic thing that any of our staff can read and review that we could use. I think the financial qualifications are quite similar to a lot of the assistance programs that we provide. So I think it would actually be relatively simple for us to come up with a community-wide program that all of our organizations are trained on to refer people. I think the challenge is what some other, some we've spoken to a little bit in the room today, but I do think in order for our organizations to engage in that work, we do have to have a community-wide goal that we're trying to reach. And I think that was something that we tried to communicate over a year ago or around a year ago that unless we come up with a goal, like it's really hard for us to talk to our funders about the work that we're engaging in. And I think the number that was presented to us at the time, our last summer, was just quite frankly not a number that we can go to funders and ask them to support. I think if, I think what we've kind of been trying to talk about is can we set a goal as a community that we, because of our area median income, we believe that SNAP utilization in our community should be at or like at or above the state utilization rate. And if it's not, that triggers some sort of process to start to work, like to hold everyone who's working for that goal accountable. So I think there are like plenty of people out there. And then how did you all do this at CDHS when you were, I think with application goals and some of what you were looking to measure?
For SNAP outreach contracts? Yeah, we, we did look at, you know, first we had to start building capacity because until about seven years ago or so, there wasn't an outreach program. And so we had to really set some both ambitious and realistic goals and define the process and really look at best practices as we went. So, you know, it became easier for the year-over-year goals to become, you know, much higher than they were in those first few years. One of the things about SNAP outreach that I think is also important is beyond, you know, education and really helping to connect people to the, the program itself and helping them understand what it is and what it isn't. And then that, you know, a little bit more of a warm handoff to the application process and assisting in that is respecting their choice too, if they choose not to continue enrollment or not to complete an application. So we don't necessarily count those touchpoints in terms of folks that we have connected with who have chosen not to submit an application or move forward with that.
I, I had wondered with the five, four or five agencies or entities that are engaged with the state for outreach, I'm just, I mean, I'm thinking about our other regional resources and, I mean, do we need to do a better job advocating for some attention in Lake County? Do some of those have specific strengths in rural communities? Cultural sensitivity, like how, I don't know anything about any, well, most of those listed on, on the list there. And so I, I think, you know, the resources seem to be there. And then how do those contracted? How do we get, do we get all of them to reach out? Are there, you know, is one of those assigned to our region or Lake County? And then how does that subrecipient eligibility and opportunity get accessed from our local entities?
Yeah, that is such a, a good question. Thank you for asking that. I think each of our outreach partners, which are four of them, bring different strategies and expertise to the table. For example, Care and Share, they're located in rural Colorado, so they're going to have more experience working in rural communities. Hunger Free Colorado, they do a lot of advocacy for immigrant and mixed-status families. BDT, they use a lot of data and texting to reach participants, et cetera. So I think, you know, the, the easiest way, if you have an organization in Lake County who's interested in becoming a subrecipient, I am more than happy to connect that organization to any of the four or even the four outreach partners to see which one fits better to partner with. In, in, in really, this is like perfect timing. Like I mentioned, there's an RFP coming out this year. So our SNAP outreach partners are going to start planning for the next fiscal year here pretty soon. And this is when they plan who they're going to be partnering with as subrecipients. And they're going to add them to their plan and their budget for the next fiscal year and the next five years as well. Did I answer your question or do you have any follow-up comments?
Um, I, I mean, I think it did a little bit, but I, 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 I mean, I wonder if we might circle back on what actually is, you know, what is Self-Corporation doing in the community now? Okay, I, I mean, I'm asking a rhetorical question. And, and how well you all understand if that is or is not working at the state level, but firmly.
So Hunger Free Colorado, they're, they cover our region for SNAP, I want to call it. They are very interested in funding a position in Lake County. I don't know if they're, they've had someone who was going to try to come. I don't know if she's still here. The, the conversations that we've had with them in the past is that we have to address some of the issues around access and SNAP in our community and bring that position here. So the conversation we're having today and potentially in the future. And that they would prefer that that position was not housed at DHS, that it was housed with a community partner. But they, they offered to fund a position here, I think it was late twenty twenty or twenty twenty.
Yeah, they held one of their fiscal year budget season was over and they specifically held money for us. If we could bring it there, yeah. And then the other piece was they want to make sure that whoever, whoever we bring in, that we're collaborating with DHS and has a really, really good relationship with our DHS department.
Full Circle's resource center has offered to take it. Yeah, like we would be so happy to have that position.
It makes also sense.
Offered to have like a DHS caseworker. Actually, when Angel was at RAPR, like we had, we're close to actually making that happen, like having him housed at Full Circle for a day or two a week. Because I think some of the barriers that were presented here, yes, like those are real, but they also exist in other rural communities that have much higher enrollment rates. And so there are other barriers, right? And we know, we talked a bit about and touched on immigration status, like that's definitely a really touchy area and folks that might have mixed-status households, for example, regardless of, of like how true, like actually in real life, how accessible staff are. It's still government, right? Like there's still going to be those fears in this country. Regardless of like how amazing the, the staff are, just DHS, just being a government office is a barrier for, for some households, quite a few, I think, in this community in particular. And so that's like, that's Full Circle's in the specialty area, right? And so we have a lot of folks that come in with those questions or fears that if we can address those like in a collaborative way, I think we could really make, make an impact in targeting that our, our Spanish-speaking mixed-status households with large, like larger numbers that are not single household, single-person household. I think we could really make moves in, in increasing those enrollment numbers and, and making a difference in, in that population. If we can get to the point that we work really collaboratively and there's mutual respect for everything that, that we're all offering. Because at the end of the day, like every person in this room like very firmly believe that like wants to make a difference in this, in this area and serve our community. Like I don't think there's anybody involved in this conversation that, that doesn't want to increase enrollment. And I think we could, we've had these conversations for a while now and they're, we keep getting like sidetracked. There's other things that come up. But at the end of the day, I do believe that we all have the same goal. And I think we just need to try and stay focused on that goal and figure out how we can, how we can help each other get there because none of us can get there alone. So I just put that perspective out there.
So do we want to talk about some of those data sets that we, do you have to kind of reflect that from the state?
Oh, no, the report's available. Carla, I know you've sent, is that all in the report? I don't know if the Lake County specific data was in the, the report, the overarching report, was it?
In the EBNE report?
Yeah.
I'm not sure. Jennifer, you, Jennifer's been much closer to this than I have been, so.
Um, no, I think the Lake County information was specifically in the presentation slides that the Lake and Sheriff's Department provided, but they did have like a supplemental spreadsheet where I pulled some of those numbers. So I'm pretty sure we could also share that if you will.
Yeah, or if you can share what you shared today with us, we'll put it out to everybody, yeah.
If, if it would be possible to include the methodology as well, that would be really helpful. So that we can stand by one replicate, that's a number or use a different methodology.
What, Carla, what are, Jennifer, what are other counties using as metrics?
For.
Well, I know we're talking about like, you know, a number of eligible individuals compared to those that are eligible and enrolled. And I know that you said that that was kind of a one-off situation because it was done on a pro bono basis, but what are other counties using in that, for a substitution of that metric consistently, I guess?
Yeah, you know, we, we've had a number of things throughout the years that we've been able to kind of point towards and make some assumptions around. In, in fact, Jennifer is involved in a longitudinal data project with the US Census Bureau that I think is going to pose some future opportunities for all of us to be able to look at some of this data in a, in a more clarified manner and in more easily accessible. There was also for many years a program access index that was used by the USDA primarily. And there was some ability to kind of do breakdown county by county with that. So, you know, I think that's been one of the challenges as a, you know, system in general and our CBMS system is that there is a limitation in what data is actually captured. We only have what we have and it's harder to do that match with census data. But if you would like, Jennifer can talk a little bit more about the projects that she's working on and, and some of the future opportunities from data sets from that.
Thank you, Carla. Go ahead, Jess.
Well, I mean, that sounds interesting, but like to me, it seemed like we, it would be great, even if the data set is super imperfect, finding a data set where we have some little bit of historic data and that it is already with no additional costs to Lake County. You know, ideally, it will, will be generated, again, even knowing if some of those are imperfect, like just more practical. Yeah, like, like so, and, and as long as we all understand that the data is not perfect, like if there's anything we can use, yeah.
The Colorado Blueprint and Hunger is also going to be releasing, releasing their data dashboard this year that CDHS and WIC and others are sharing data, knowing that it's imperfect and that there are lots of different ways to interpret it, but at least that provides more data transparency. And it should be in a dashboard format that will be searchable by county as well. I'm not sure what all will be included in that. I'm optimistic that that's a starting point for more data transparency and for folks being able to really understand what's happening in their community and where the data needs to be more accurate.
I also wonder, oh, I'm sorry, I just, I don't.
I was just going to say that number is almost identical to the number of residents in Lake County who live at a hundred and twenty-five percent of federal poverty, which is the number that we have used in every Food Access study since 2014. And it's the number we have all been referring to, so.
Yeah, it's, it is conservative, but I also think it's like acceptable to start there. I was just going to ask, are there any rules or regulations that would prevent our local DHS office collecting like an additional data set around race ethnicity? That would, like, that we would just literally ask somebody as they're filling out an application, their race ethnicity, including, like, and do not disclose so that we can, we can stratify data and, and really understand if there's disparities or?
My only question with that would be that it's a federal program and if we don't follow those federal guidelines, I don't know what the.
Yeah, that's my question. I, I don't know if they're.
A way to do it, changing it to the client would be just for whoever the caseworker is who's, who's doing it to just check box if it was self-reported or employee-reported. I don't know if that would be.
Yeah, I think you'd have to ask the, something in relation to the outreach.
Exactly.
Some standard data that's gathered around that.
And then it would be a subset of all of the cases, but at least it would be something.
Carla? Do you have a answer?
I think that one, FNS is very prescriptive with what we have on our applications and they approve our applications. And if we have incorrect information or are asking SNAP applicants more than we are federally allowed to, we have to remove that. So unfortunately, we do have to keep with what is actually on our application, which is very specific and fairly limited with client choice on what they can actually select for their race and ethnicity. So we would be in violation of federal rules if you were, if Lake County required additional information from SNAP applicants.
But if, if the question was something that, that a caseworker filled out and wasn't asking an applicant or client, would that be?
It's the same. I mean, they should be, they can ask what we already tell the workers they can ask. They can't ask more than what FNS allows us to collect.
I understand.
Of course now.
So that if, if there was a, if there was an additional question that only caseworkers filled out and did not ask a client, like just not changing the way that they're, they're reporting race ethnicity, but checking a box after it's been reported, whether the, the caseworker reported it or the, the client self-reported it, that wouldn't create an additional question for a client. Would that be permissible?
Like internal data.
Correct.
Like an.
I think our, workers can already case comment that. CBMS doesn't have a way to differentiate though, so it would have to be collected specifically at Lake County. Another way, CBMS doesn't allow for that indication of who it came from.
And then, I, yeah, I don't, I don't know CBMS, but could you export that as like, as a spreadsheet and then filter by?
It would have to be like, I think, separate data collection.
Outside of CBMS, outside of the management system.
But she said they could add it as a caseworker comment in CBMS.
You can't find it in CBMS.
You can't export that data.
Yeah.
Why are we living in this?
So there's no commentary exportation, like if there's a comment, there's no way to see that. To go into each individual's file to see them that way and basically tally it by.
Yeah, and it doesn't like search words or that.
Right.
Instead of like a.
We just have to set to a separate data collection, like after each interview.
So are you, were you trying to get to the point of actually having individualized data or just aggregate data?
Aggregates data.
Because I wonder if we could just like have the caseworkers guess.
Right, well, I mean, if they are, it sounds like in most cases anyway, right?
No, 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 I mean, like, just, like, we could just offline ask the caseworkers who are filling out that form, what do you think? Are, are, are you sell, are, are you guessing half the time, ninety percent of the time, ten percent of the time? I mean, we get to the nearest ten percent.
But, but then we wouldn't be able to, we wouldn't be able to actually look at the X percentage that they weren't guessing on its own.
Right, you can't.
Like when the racial break on, certain type of comment, right?
Is it a high rate in your, with your caseworkers that have to select race ethnicity for clients? Like is this actually a, do you all know or is that a Sierra question?
If we do the data entry, depending on what they listed on their application or if they didn't list anything at all, we have to check other unknown.
How many times do you, how many times do you check other unknown, I guess?
Anecdotally.
Yeah, right? Like if you had five applications today, out of those five, typically how many would you check?
Right? Like, if you had five applications today, out of those five, typically how many would you check other unknown?
One.
One?
But.
Most of them.
And caseworkers are never guessing a race and, and checking off? Yeah, okay. So, so then the race data, we just exclude other unknown and then we still have a data set that we could use, right?
Is a client who reported.
Yeah, because that, that is also reported.
And Sierra, if you could answer, do you give direction or any guidance on checking other unknowns, just as standard protocol pretty much?
Yeah, it's definitely the standard protocol. I understand that the federal government tells us as eligibility technicians that we should make that decision, but I feel like a lot of folks don't feel comfortable with that, including myself. So that is our protocol is just to go with other unknown. I will also say too on that, though it asks on the application and CDHS, correct me if I'm wrong, I don't believe it's on the redetermination. So though you guys are looking at this data information that you'd be trying to collect, it's not just applications that we're receiving. So the ongoing caseload is not going to reflect that information because it's already been reported on the application, not the redeterminations of who, of individuals who are currently receiving benefits.
Yeah.
Yes, Sierra's correct. We only ask it at one, at one point, right? So if it's in the system, the worker should not have to re-request it unless the client would want to change it for some reason. But generally, it's collected at initial application. And so then if an individual moves from county to county, that could also make that fluctuate depending on how that county or other county worker answered, you know, how that question was answered. All these are the complexities of why this is a really difficult data set to collect.
But what Terry, so what Terry's pointing out is that a lot of folks will come to us already on benefits. Sure. Will move here. And so whoever did that original application, we don't necessarily know what their.
But it, wouldn't it still be tied to their case in the system, even if we're not asking, like?
Yeah, but no, because.
Someone might have come in, someone, a different caseworker in a different county, so.
Actually did guess, yeah, 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 okay. But, but what percentage of cases is that?
You know, I don't know across the board, and I, I think it does depend on the county's protocol because like technically we shouldn't tell CDHS that we recommend other. I mean, it's okay. It's not like we're gonna be in trouble for that, but I think, I think, and correct me if I'm wrong, Carla, the FNS expects, and it was really sort of an older protocol because it used to be face-to-face. But that was the whole thing, was like, you meet with somebody, you collect this more information. And the intention was to actually collect that data with a guess.
I think.
I'm glad we don't, but.
I, I, I think like the only reason we're like even going down this thread is so that we can do targeted outreach, right? And so similar to, to eligible and unenrolled number, I don't think that's perfect, but if we have like a mostly good, consistent database that we're referring back to, and it sounds like it's like within like 75 to 80% accurate, like that seems like a good number to, to use.
Carla, um, how do we get reports on what's been entered in CBMS on an application for those demographics?
Yeah, so again, we, we actually don't typically create reports on race and ethnicity, nor do we release that information. There's, there's a number of reasons for that, and it's not just because the data integrity is, is so poor for the most part. You know, I, I, I don't think that there is any state that I'm aware of that does actually release race and ethnicity specific reports for their SNAP utilization.
Good, good, good. If, if Lake County requested it, if it de-identified.
So, you know, I, I understand part of this is that you want to be able to do some targeted outreach and, and I think that that is a good motivator for that. And also potentially, it sounds like there's a concern that maybe SNAP is underutilized in, in certain spaces. What I would caution on this too is the opposite effect that this could have, we were to release this data. So, uh, for instance, depending on the perspective of the individual looking at that data, could they in fact flip it on its head and say, you know, look at the percentage of people who aren't working in our community or who, you know, are, are draining our system or other horrible cliches that we've all heard before, right? So that is another reason that we typically do not release this data.
But the data, that, like, that could, sorry, that could happen with all of the data that is currently available without a, the race, racial lens.
And the dogs.
Yeah.
And it is likely, and that's, that is an unfortunate occurrence that, you know, we, either way, you are looking at uh, potentially using the data for very good components and also people could use it for bad arguments as well.
Yeah. Carla? Are, Carla, has the CDHS releasing SNAP data to the Blueprint Dashboard Project? And if so, what data are you releasing?
Yeah, the, the data that we have provided is, is very much our, other publicly available data. Not all of it is published, but most of it can be requested at any time. So I, I would say on average, we get between eight and 10 requests a year for race and ethnicity data, and we decline them all. Again, there are just a number of reasons for that. The, you know, typically we do release age, a number of households that have, you know, earned income, what the, the person's status, if they, they have a disability or not. You know, there, there are definitely components that we are far more capable of releasing with confidence that it is just very different, I think, from race and ethnicity data.
Virtually every other state department does release data with a race and, race and ethnicity lens. As race and ethnicity is, like, data stratified by race and ethnicity is one of the most important items that we have in, in terms of trying to address health equity. So not releasing that, that data actually is incredibly harmful because we can't, then we can't look at things from a lens of, of racial equity and inclusion. It, it removes, removing race from, from the conversation is again, like a sixties practice that drives more inequity. Schools is a great example. If, if we look at our school data and don't stratify it by race ethnicity, we are missing a mark by a long shot. Being able to look at benefit, benefits access through a racial equity lens, like, is crucial to actually making any kind of strike in this community, particularly in a community like this where we have a really large and strong immigrant population. So this, this feels like hugely problematic.
And I would like to say I, I agree with you on all of the points that you just made. I think what is more concerning to me or problematic is releasing data that we don't have any confidence in for its overall integrity. But like, so if, if it were good data and we could guarantee that it was accurate and good data, there could be a different conversation around that. I am not necessarily saying that this is something that we would never, ever do. I think probably what I would want to do is have a conversation with the Attorney General's Office about potential ramifications on this. So, but all of your points, very well taken, and I do agree with you, we're certainly not trying to erase this data, but rather we would wrap, we would want to put good data out into the community as opposed to bad data, which is what we feel we currently have.
Yeah, I appreciate that. So I'd love to join any conversations in terms of advocating for this at a state level because I understand that, like, CDHS is following internal protocol and that trickles down to what the county is actually able to access and do with it. But this does feel like a, a large issue, not only the, like, the erasure of, of racial data, which is what's happening with it not being released, but also the fact that a lot of data is being collected, that the, the integrity is being questioned by state-level departments. Like, we, as community members and as advocates and as county, rely on quality data, and if we can't trust data that's coming from our state, that causes just a lot of issues and hardship, I think, on organizations.
I, I would also encourage you, uh, it, think about how we could provide some federal advocacy around this issue so that FNS could tighten up their guidance and the requirements and, and how this looks for states. I know that Colorado was not the only state struggling with this issue, and it is something that I think we would really like to have a better grasp on. And, and the reason, like I said, is that we don't release this data is that we don't even necessarily trust it. So this, this is a nut that we would like to crack, that we would like to, you know, have a, a further or better understanding across, you know, in intention of use, and then in really get the USDA to course correct some of the components that they have given us over the last decade that have been less than ideal guidance. It, it really has been conflictual. In fact, at one point, and Terry probably knows the history of this better than I do, we were given very specific guidance by the USDA. They came back and audited us, said that we weren't doing it correctly. They wanted us to do it a different way, and then three years later said, oh, no, oops, we messed up, right? So there is a component of this that is very much ripe for federal advocacy, and I would be happy to have that conversation with folks as well.
Yeah, I just want to echo that. That's why we're so excited to hopefully collaborate with DHS in the future because yes, we're gonna do, define a lot of local interventions, but at the end of the day, we're still tied by state and federal regulations. You know, and the coalition is a political organizing group, and so, yeah, I would love to approach this from like a really holistic systemic stance and not just, you know, what are little things we can do here and there as a community. Because yeah, yeah, it's some of these red tape, you know, that's what we hear from our caseworkers, is I would love to do X, Y, and Z, but the state says I can't, or the government, so.
So leaving this, like wrapping up conversation, what, how, what data points or sets can we look at? And then like, what are the next steps for connecting on the review and assessment?
Yeah, so it sounds like, um, if Jennifer, you know, and Carla want to get the data that was shared today specific to Lake County, that would be great. And then we could either set up, you know, a time to do that data collection. I know we're gonna do the facilitated conversation if we wanted to focus on data and our, if we feel like that soon enough. I think a data strategy session could be really helpful and productive, and I don't, I don't know how you all feel. It could be helpful to have this date, a part of that conversation, it answers those questions quickly as to what can and can't be looked at and done. And then we have somewhere to start on the mo, on the goals and measures for that. Other proposals or other?
Yeah, I.
Suggestions?
And I know there's like no sign sheet, I, I personally would like to see that if it comes through, when it comes through, and, and I can start comparing what the methodology that they use to just like using 125%. I can, I can compare, I can, I can go back a few years and do what they did to the data compared to what just raw 125 would be and, and bring that to the facilitative session. We do. And then I, I think that the piece that we talked about that I'd love to, to explore further in the facilitated session was understanding what the impact of this ten of outreach was in other communities and what we can expect to see in our community and then how we want to set our goal in accordance with, with the differences and similarities with what they did and the differences and similarities in our community. I think like setting an aspirational goal, right, and then the benchmarks drop, drop.
And, and like that, I mean, like, I think also there's sets of goals that are things a little bit more under our direct control, like especially the outreach things, like, I, I, I don't, I don't, I'm trying to throw things out because I'm gonna get them wrong. But like, you know, there are some things that your caseworkers that can actually do, or number of ads we can run, or whatever. You know, and then there's like, kind of like outcomes, which we have less control over. But, 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 but we should, you know, and not direct control over, you know? So, and then, and then we can plug through, like, you know, are, is there some plausible, you know, link between the things we can do and the outcomes to track and then do our best to find some data set to track those global outcomes?
Absolutely. And, and, and like one last plug for, I think, like, yes, the state has outreach partners and, and like our organizations have, have worked with Hunger Free and had conversations with them, but like, we also have four organizations that like are deeply invested and like have capacity and have good relationships with funders and either have current funding or can, can apply for funding in the future. And I'd really love for this to be a local effort and lean on community, like statewide partners as needed. But like you have four organizations who like want to be at the table. And I know there's been, you know, like, a narrative recently that like the nonprofit community isn't collaborative and they don't want to be here and they don't do good work, but that's not true. And like, we are here and we work so closely together and we want to be part of this conversation, and that's how we've approached this conversation. Right, like, how can we help? How can we be a partner in this? So, like, please, like, lean on us first and like use the resources that we have and the connections that we have with funders and community partners and community clients before we like go to a state agency, because I know we can do it better.
Was, like, one other thing, thank you, that my brain's back on the data, like, so, so to, to bring to the next data discussion, it'd also be great to at least say you can share, like, if, if funders or if Hunger Free are, are, are demanding or suggesting certain metrics, we'd be good to know what those are, so we can either try to, or not even try, they should be different. You know, or, 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 or hit them, you know?
Jeff, I have reached out to Hunger Free Colorado. We haven't had an opportunity to connect, but I've reached out to them to talk about the outreach programs and I can connect with you guys about, about that, whatever I learned from that or.
Yeah.
They connect us to help us, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They will, like, they have made it very clear, like, we want to invest in Lake County.
So I just, I just tried to connect with them through the, through an email on their website, and I have had significant issues trying to connect to somebody.
Yeah.
Okay.
And, and also, I mean, I get like, I mean, funders have their own, you have a strategy. And sometimes you have to.
Yeah.
Try to check their boxes while implementing your own strategy.
Well, with that, so yeah, I guess, to just point though, and like, where my brain went with that, Noah, on your comment is why wouldn't, why? Like, to me, that would integrate into this whole system, like the outreach system setup, which it sounds like that conversation has already started, right? So like, it's not a separate, it's not a separate effort.
Totally.
But like, I, like, yeah, how do we integrate, make it successful or poke holes and make it better?
Fully, fully. There's, there's, there's been a pattern in the past of like trusting statewide partners more than local partners. And like, I, I would like to like actively like stop that, right? I think we can do both, right? Like, we, we're working with statewide partners all the time, right? Like, they have a place, but like when we're trying to connect with individuals, like, we have a place, right?
Right, right. And there's, but yeah, and like, there's all the framework everyone's working through and, yeah, okay. We feel good about some next steps on.
What you needed out of it?
Yeah, I mean, I, I mean, I think, yeah, no, I, I hope that there's, like, we can set up the next conversation through the facilitated conversations and great goals and the expectations of those conversations. And, um, I think, I hope that we have made it clear for support, you know, in, you know, working outside perhaps what is, you know, acceptable or funded through the state directly to increase capacity on all levels, so.
Yeah, and that's what it takes is leadership and support back, so thank you very much for doing that.
And we have a date for that conversation, right?
No.
No, okay, all right. So a few things to be TBD, to be determined.
Um, there's a question about slide decks being available. Carla, Carla, do you all have?
Yeah, I, I don't know how the best way for us to get this information to you, if you want me to send it to you, Janine, or?
Well, actually, you, you had it. Okay, so Tim knows how. I just want to make sure we had permission on that.
Yeah, yeah, of course, that's totally charitable. And actually, Tim, why don't we go back and attach some additional information that was requested today? And then you can send that one out to anybody wants to make it available, just so we can be more inclusive of some of the conversation that was covered. Um, I also wanted to ask, uh, so Jennifer can make available, I think the spreadsheet that she had mentioned was not part of the EBNE study, Janine, that I had sent to you originally. It was kind of an, an addendum or an additional component. I think, was it, Noah, were you the one who said that you wanted to try to recreate if you knew the methodology? Um, uh, I think, was it, Noah, were you the one who said that you wanted to try to recreate if you knew the methodology?
I mean, if it's, if it's not too complicated, I mean, if it's like a fifteen-step thing.
You know, we'll, we'll send you everything that we have. Uh, I think that I will tell you is that I'm pretty sure one of the data sets that they used is uh like they have proprietary rights over it, its extraction. Um, I am also more than happy to arrange a, you know, thirty-minute meeting with anyone who would like um with the folks who conducted the study, so you can ask them specific questions if you would like.
Okay, thank you, Carla, I'll, I'll reach out if I have anything to, thank you.
Right.
Great, thank you all, thank you.
Thanks.